I would like to call the Board of Public Works to order. There is one item on the agenda, taxi fare rate increase. Good evening, Doug.
I'll start with our budget process here. During the 2023 operation budget for taxi, we discovered there to be a considerable shortfall in ridership revenue based on the ridership trends over the years. So this translates directly into utilizing additional levy funding to support the taxi service. So over the years, you know, the city has strived to maintain as close to budget neutral taxi service as possible. So when the ridership runs low or ridership decreases, that adds to the local share. And when I say the local share, the term local share means the portion of the city, the city has to pay the shortfall of grant funding and ridership revenue. So that's considered the local share. Our transit grant covers about 60% of our operational costs. Ridership revenue covers most of the remaining cost. And then the other levy funds, if needed, cover that local share. Since our last rate increase was applied in 2017, which was an increase of 50 cents a ride for general fare rides, we had an agency fare increase of $1.50 in 2018. Staff was directed to review the option of a rate increase for 2023 for our taxi fare rates. So if you've had a chance to read the ridership trends, you notice there's a historical steady decline over the years. However, in 2020 and 2021, we had extreme drop in ridership due to COVID. Ridership has rebound since then, close, nearly close to the 2019 numbers that we were seeing. So ridership volume is something that's difficult to predict, but based on ridership numbers and a slight historical decline, we were able to estimate 2023 ridership numbers in our budget process. So in your rate, in your rate increase attachment, you'll see the calculated 2023 ridership numbers, and they were based on a 10% increase from the 2021 numbers that we were seeing. So that puts us pretty close to the historical trends that we've been seeing for ridership. The spreadsheet indicates the amount of additional revenue that the city would create based on a rate increase of a regular fare rate going up $1, so that goes from $4.50 to $5.50 a ride. And the agency fares would increase $1.50, so from $7.50 a ride to $9.00 a ride. So we did take into consideration that ridership may be affected by an increase. That's common when you raise the fare rates, that you will see a slightly less ridership numbers. So considering these factors, we've estimated the increase as a potential increase to revenue in 2023 to the $88,506 that you see on your spreadsheet.
All right. Do we have any motion on the floor?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, any questions for Doug? Okay, just one comment. I'm in favor, I never was in favor of eliminating taxis, and if it means that with the price of fuel and everything going up, if it means to have an increase, I think that's more important to the public out there so they can get, especially for people that have no other means at all. They rely very heavily on the taxi service, and I appreciate you making the effort to make sure that they have this available for them. If it means an increase, I think they are not going to be upset about it. So I appreciate you making this effort to maintain taxi in the City of West Bend. Thank you. All right, we have a motion on the floor? Yes.
I just thought of something. Will there, when you said that no one will be upset, I think some people will be upset, especially if it's a surprise, when all of a sudden, does the driver collect the fare?
Yes. Both, they sell coupons and there's driver.
Yeah. Will there be an announcement that goes out ahead of time?
Absolutely. There's all, there's all sorts of posting requirements for that. There is a public hearing tonight that's required for any rate increase. We need state federal transit authority or approval to do any kind of increase. They have, they have granted that. They have no, no issues with that, since our last one has been five years.
Will there be anything posted in the taxis ahead of time for the regular riders?
The taxi themselves?
Yeah.
I'm certain we can do that. That's, we, we want to get the information out there as much as possible, so.
Thanks, Doug.
Just a comment on that. I agree there will be probably some, but as a taxi driver, I used to be a taxi driver, there were a lot of people that said they were very, very upset when there wasn't an indication that the taxi was going to be eliminated from the city, and they felt that they had no other means to go. And if it meant to raise the taxi fare, they were happy to pay that extra difference. Alderman, Allen.
Yeah, quick question, Doug. People that already have a supply of coupons and the rate increase comes through, will we be honoring those coupons as if they're a full fare?
Certainly, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I guess one other thing, if you don't mind, that I would add is the number, the local share number would change drastically by that 88,000, the difference. So if we did not increase the rates to this amount, our local share is estimated over, just over 100,000. So with this increase, it brings it down to closer to 13,000, 14,000 range. And our budgets that we presented will see the range. Will reflect an increase.
Okay, any other questions? There are none? Okay, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much, Doug. No further business before the Board of Public Works adjourn.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Finance Committee meeting for November 7th. We've got three items on the agenda, first of which being the resolution accepting a donation from Judith Koenig.
Thank you. Good evening. On October 25th, Ms. Koenig came to the Police Department, donated a $100 check, very clear to be split 50-50 between the Police Department and the Fire Department, expressed her thanks for all our city's services, and pays to note this is something Ms. Koenig does on a yearly basis. So a great citizen, and we think are tremendously requesting it be put into the appropriate accounts, crime prevention for the PD, and to support the smoke alarm program for the Fire Department.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion in a second. Any questions for Chief Daring? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Ms. Koenig.
Item number two, resolution to accept donations to the Parks, Recreation and Forestry Department. Take her away, Mike.
Thank you. This evening, we have several donations to present to the Common Council and the community. The first donation of $65 was donated by Michael McGuire for the use of the Regner Park pickleball courts for demonstration in clinics during the summer of 2022. The second donation of $1,250 donated by various citizens for the All Abilities Playground, Fence Picket fundraiser, and general donations for this project. The next donation of $864 was donated by the West Bend Friends of Parks and Recreation and sponsorship of our youth football league. We are happy to announce this evening that former Mayor Mike Miller and his wonderful wife, Alice, have become beach bums, and they donated $1,000 towards the renovation of the Regner Park Beach House. The next donation of a value, with a value of $1,070, was donated by the Riverside Disc Golf and West Bend Disc Golf Club. This donation was for 19 new tee signs with the sponsorships owned on the Disc Golf course. They did a really nice job on those. And the last donation is two sculptures donated by the West Bend Friends of Sculpture to be placed at Lackleran Conservancy. The first sculpture is Double Dancer to be placed outside the barn, and the Atomic Sculpture to be placed outside the farmhouse. Both of these sculptures were approved by the Friends Board, the Friends of Lackleran Board. They are in support of this. So we'd like to say thank you this evening to all the individuals and organizations that help support a wide variety of projects and programs for Park Rec Forestry Department and West Bend.
Thank you, Mike. I echo that.
Second.
We've got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mike. Appreciate that. Agenda item number three, approve the City of West Bend accounts receivable write-offs. Ms. Carey.
Hello, good evening. I had provided you guys with three lists that require Common Council authorization to deem as uncollectible. The larger list is comprised of ambulance invoices that are billed out under our contract with the Three Rivers Billing Company that have been returned to us for further collection. The majority of these accounts have been placed in the state debt collection program, so we will hopefully collect additional monies from those. The second small list that I provided are from invoices from 2020 and 2022 for miscellaneous services provided by the city and invoiced by the Finance Department. And then the final list, the third list, are 2019 delinquent personal property taxes that are still outstanding from businesses that have ceased operations. The total amount between all three are, of the write-offs is $118,385.
Is that between all three years, Carey?
That's for all the three lists. It's for varying years.
Okay, okay, gotcha. That's not just this year, I guess, is the point?
No.
Okay.
We're still collecting on this year's.
Gotcha, gotcha, okay. I'm looking for.
Motion to approve.
We got a motion in a second. Any further discussion or questions for Carey? Alderman, Allen.
Yeah, what's, just a quick question, SDC?
That's the state debt collection program. It's similar to the TRIP program.
All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Carey. We've got a motion in a second on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Carey. With no further business before the Finance Committee adjourned by the College Chair.
And good evening. I'd like to call to order the City of West Bend Common Council meeting for November 7th. Note that we do have a quorum with all Alderman President counterculture. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'll note that we have 19 items on our agenda, the first being public hearings. Number one, a public hearing on the proposed City of West Bend shared ride taxi fare rate increase. So this is a public hearing. If anybody from the public would like to speak on this item, feel free to come on up.
Motion to close.
Welcome, sir. If you don't mind stating your name and address for us.
Good evening. Joel Ongert, 1315 Schlemer Drive here in West Bend. Common Council meetings in West Bend have always been held at 6:30 PM going back, as far as I could see, at least a decade, maybe longer. Tonight's meeting is awfully important. You have two public hearings on two very important topics, and I'm just curious why this meeting was moved to 5 o'clock on short notice. Thank you.
Thank you. I mean, I can answer, was it short notice? It's same as our normal posting times, and as we did with our last budget, budget discussion, we held the meeting a little bit earlier to give staff the opportunity to be here as well before going home and going back and forth, so, thank you. Anybody else from the public who'd like to speak on the taxi item?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Thank you. It's been a motion in a second. All in favor of ending the public hearing? Somebody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next up is a public hearing on the proposed City of West Bend budget for year of 2023. If anybody from the public would like to speak on this item, feel free to come on Otherwise, look for a motion to end the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Thank you. It's been a motion in a second. All in favor of ending the public hearing? Somebody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next up, we have a motion to consent the agenda consisting of items three, four, and five.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. It's been a motion in a second. Any questions on these? Hearing none? All in favor, somebody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on to agenda for consideration. Number six, we have a resolution for the 2023 taxi fare increase.
Motion to approve. Second.
Thank you, Butchlick and Allen. Any discussion on this? Hearing none? All in favor, somebody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number seven, approve the 2023 city shared ride taxi operation.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Al and Allen. Doug, do you have anything you want to say? Nope? All right, just going to let us keep rolling on. And all those in favor, somebody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next is approve 2022 shared ride taxi agreement, service and lease.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Dolnick and Model. And any questions on this? Hearing none? All in favor, somebody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number nine, approve taxi service Title VI program.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Model and Allen. Any questions on this one? Hearing none? All in favor, somebody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number 10, a resolution operating the necessary funds for the operation of the government and administration of the City of West Bend for the year of 2023.
Motion to approve. Second.
Thank you. Butchlick and Allen. Any questions on this item? Hearing none? All in favor, somebody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, and that passes. Number 11, an ordinance amending Section 1.571 of the Municipal Code Regarding Membership of the Licensing Board. We'll start with a brief presentation by our attorney. Take it away.
So this comes out of some issues that arose regarding the voting on one of the open licenses. If you recall back in, I think it was July or August, after that vote, there was some discussion about why the meet by the clerk was a voting member on the licensing board rather than just a department head presenting a recommendation, as with most of the other things you see take place before the different boards. So there was some discussion. We are presenting just an amendment to the code to add instead of, as a third voting member, an alter person instead of the municipal clerk. Lisbon has no objections to this. I think it would smooth the process, since sometimes those decisions can be political in nature and not put the political aspect onto a staff member.
Thank you. Kayler and Model. Is there any questions on this?
Yeah. I just wanted, I just want to say, I always did feel like, whoa, sorry. I always did feel like this put the city clerk in an odd, in an odd position. I'm really glad we're doing this. Yeah, very good.
Hold on.
Couple of questions. The first is, we had delegated routine, certain routine approvals to the clerk. Will that change?
Nope, that's under a separate statute. That's part of our code. That's not going to change.
Okay. And, and the second is, since all licensing actions ultimately come to the entire council, why, why do we need a separate licensing board?
Because, oh, a separate licensing board?
Yeah.
I believe by statute, you're required to have a licensing board, similar in nature to the Board of Public Works and the Finance Committee. So it's, it's a statutory process also. I mean, it's in our code. If we want to eliminate it, I can certainly look into the elimination, but I think it's meant to streamline some of the processes.
All right. Any other discussion?
I had a question. Is that unique to cities? Because my former employer didn't have a separate board.
I think, there are, I'd have to double check. I believe there are separate provisions pertaining for villages and cities, but I, again, I'd have to double check and see if it's a specific statutory requirement the same manner as Board of Public Works. I know villages are often run slightly differently when it comes to public works, and, and they oftentimes run a committee of the whole, which essentially substitutes for all those committee meetings, so.
Okay, I was just wondering. Thank you, Ian.
Any other discussion? And we do have a motion in a second, so all those in favor, somebody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And number 12, an ordinance amending Section 8.1451 of the Municipal Code Regarding Maintenance of the Right-of-Way.
I can take that, too. So if you recall, I want to say maybe a year ago, we adopted specific provisions regarding the maintenance of the right-of-way. It, for a long time, had been a, I guess, unwritten rule and had never had any major pushback on the fact that the right-of-way was maintained by the adjacent property owner. We created this Section 8.145 to specify who has to maintain it. What we're doing with this ordinance is adding the last two sentences, which clarifies the manner in which the right-of-way is maintained, because we've had increasing problems with people installing other things, other, other items onto municipal right-of-way. So we're adding the language that specifies that the right-of-way is going to be maintained with topsoil and established grass unless otherwise approved by the Engineering Department, and that if, if it makes sense, the city engineer can establish general guidelines regarding those installations rather than doing case-by-case approvals.
Move to approve. Second.
Thank you. Kayler and Dolnick and Model, you had a question?
Is there a reason why we couldn't see these established guidelines before taking this issue up?
I don't think we, we have not felt the need to establish specific guidelines. It's more of a review of what are the sightlines, where is it located, how does it affect the surrounding properties, and what is being proposed?
Okay.
Obviously, there's a big difference between, I put some day lilies, you know, around this tree that's in my right-of-way, and I have a four-foot-high hedge in the right-of-way.
A kid's playset or something, yeah.
Yeah, obviously, we, we aren't going to improve, you know, approve permanent installations when, even if you want to put a sidewalk there, you have to get a grant of privilege. The, the ability to establish general guidelines is more of a, if this becomes a huge issue as we move forward and we need to streamline the process, we can establish those guidelines.
And we would revisit here at that time, or?
Certainly, we can. I just want to make sure there's, I built that in to make sure there's flexibility to adapt as.
Okay.
This is or is not an issue as we move forward.
Okay.
Like I said, for 50-plus years, we didn't have anything specific saying you had to maintain your right-of-way and it was fine, and suddenly it became more of an issue, and it's just one of those developing things that we need to be able to adapt to.
Okay.
People that already have landscaping that doesn't, you know, impede sightlines and so on, are they going to have to apply for a grant of privilege to put flowers, or?
I, I don't think a grant of privilege would be necessary for non-permanent installations. I mean, a grant of privilege is much more if you're permanently installing something and plants aren't necessarily permanent. Engineering may require them to document that they have these installations so that they have a record of who's there. And then, you know, of course, the other piece of that, as with a, you know, any grant of privilege or any other of the carriage walks that come up when we do downtown construction, any construction in the old areas, typically those are taken out and not replaced at the city's expense, which is standard for all carriage walks and everything else. If it's in our right-of-way, it can be removed at the city's discretion.
Any other discussion? And I'll call for votes. All those in favor, somebody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, and that passes. Number 13, resolution approving a certified survey map to get, dedicate and name a 40-foot-wide right-of-way for Vine Street located in the northeast quarter, Section 24, Township 11, North Range 19 East. And we have a brief presentation by Jim Merkey. Jim?
Thank you. Tonight, we're asking the council to consider the resolution to dedicate and name the northern portion of the remaining area for, that we need for Vine Street. CSM was presented to Plan Commission back on Tuesday and was approved with the condition that the council endorse the right-of-way dedication and naming of Vine Street. This is just to, you know, secure the area for future expansion when the council decides, and the need is there for Vine Street to be extended.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Al and Dolnick. Any questions for Jim? Hearing none? All in favor, somebody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
All right.
Jim? Termination and transfer of airport lease Dricken to Muehlbauer. Mark?
Good evening. The Drickens wish to transfer ownership of the hangar within lease lot, lot number 35 at the airport. You have two documents in front of you. One is the transfer agreement, and the other is a new lease for the new leasing. Both of these documents went to the Airport Commission for discussion and were recommended for approval to you. The transfer agreement is just a housekeeping document where it actually allows that the city has to authorize the transfer between owners within the airport. It also addresses things like the terms of, is the fees paid already and absorbed? The hangar site lease is our standard wording. This has been the standard format that we've used for the last, I would say, decade or so. It is essentially consistent with the FAA requirements and meets all of our, recommend approval of both documents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Burquist and Allen. And questions for Mark?
Just a, just a quick one. The reason this is, this is coming before us is because the airport is city-owned. Is that?
That is correct. You own, you own, you're the lesser in this.
Okay, okay. Is there any, any way to put this detail onto management or something? Or is this always going to have to come before us?
It's actually a contractual arrangement, so I think by statute, we'd be required to, to have you address it.
All right. Thank you. Anything else? And all in favor, somebody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Now we're on to reports. First up is a report by Alderman Burquist regarding the Library, Library Board meeting held on 10 of 18.
Thank you, sir, and thank you, Whitey, for the kind words the other day. It's good to know that there's someone that actually watches these meetings on TV. The last meeting of the Library Board was held on October 18th. After the Pledge of Allegiance and the introduction of the newest member of the Library Board, Barbara Olson, welcome, Barbara. We approved the consent agenda, which included the last meetings minutes and the monthly revenues and expenditures. Financial reports were submitted and approved. The Library Director's report included the hiring of Vanessa Taylor as the new circulation manager. Welcome, Vanessa. The library is now using multi-factor authentication in all of its email, email accounts. This is a request, or this is at the request of the Monarch Library System. It seems more and more entities are using, are getting on board with this type of IT security. The strategic plan is in its final stages. Steve hopes that we can present the plan to the community for feedback before finalizing it by the board. We were briefed on the status of the collection to include a new turnover ratio formula that was created after reviewing the circulation data. This will help in determining what items to purchase and what items to weed out of the collection. The adult programming team is in the process of planning for 2023. By planning ahead, the expectation is to garner more publicity for the adult library programs, which will then in turn result in more attendance, which is a good thing. The Library Board President reported that it had been a slow month and had nothing to report. The only item on the agenda for consideration was the final approval of the 2023 library budget. There had been a couple of updates since the last time we acted on the budget, so it was necessary for us to vote on its approval. The budget was approved with the updates. The next meeting of the Library Board is scheduled for November 15th at the library, and you're all welcome if you'd like to come.
Thank you. Any questions for Brett? Then moving on to 16, a report by Alderman Kayler regarding the Park and Rec Commission meeting held on 10/27.
Park and Rec, a committee met on October 27th. I guess you're not able to attend, but I have a report.
Randy, your mic.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Park and Rec met on October 27th. I was not in attendance, but I do have a report prepared. Mike Yench went over the capital budget process and what it meant to the Park and Rec Department and the different items that they had in the capital budget. We received an annual report from Courtney Cox Paulson for the lack of the rand conservancy. Many things happening there. Wood duck houses, nature playgrounds, wildflower plant sale, monarch butterflies, bees, Lake Loop Trail, and many other things. We accepted the two sculpture donations which Mike spoke about previously. We also had the donations which Mike spoke about previously. We had a report from the chairman, secretary, nothing on those two fronts. Rec supervisor, we have 19 lifeguard apps. 10 are currently enrolled in the lifeguard training, so we are well on our way. Other than that, street tree planting, preparation of bid documents, a couple other minor items in there. And then Mike reported on getting the beach house ready for the summer of 2023, furnishing lifeguard room concession stand, all those types of things, so. And then also, Mike reported that Jackie Maynard has retired. Many thanks to Jackie for sharing all her gifts and talents with us for the past 32 years. That's it.
Thank you. Any questions for Alderman Kayler? All right. Next up, we got a report by Alderman Allen regarding the downtown bid board meeting held on 11/1.
Yeah, on November 1st, bid board met. I also was unable to attend, followed in Randy's footsteps in that respect. The financial report was made and approved. We discussed holiday sponsorships for two items. One is a sponsorship of movies and at free movie showing, showings, and that's being looked into by our director. That'll be at the Ben Theater. The second is for sponsoring a ice sculpture for the downtown winter warm-up in January. That also is being pursued by our director, and we discussed the tree lighting ceremony on Thursday, November 3rd at 6:00 PM, and it went off without a hitch other than the sound could have been a little louder.
Well, once I got upstage, I, then I really, you know, spiked it up for the crowd, so.
Yeah. No, it was, it was just difficult to hear. We need to work on getting it louder. And then we had a presentation on the historic preservation district that we're looking to put in place by the State Historical Society. It was an outstanding presentation, very interesting. If you have the chance, I would recommend you go out to the city's website and take a look at the bid meeting. And it starts about 13 minutes into the presentation and runs almost to the end, but that is going to the state for final approval November 18th, and Jess and Administrator Chambo will be there representing the city, and we expect to actually hear back on that, at that meeting.
Sounds great.
Any questions? Cool. Thank you.
All right. And then we have a report by Alderman Dolnick, I believe, regarding the Plan Commission meeting.
We had a very good Plan Commission meeting. Some exciting things in store for the city. First of all, we passed a resolution regarding creation of TIF number 16 and rezoning that area from industrial to mixed use. That area runs on both sides of Sand Drive roughly from We Energies north to Decor Road. And that will help develop that area, which hasn't changed in about 100 years, most of it anyway. We also finally approved a site plan for the former Ready Mix property after two years, I'm thinking. And the final site plan is just excellent. The residents who were there were, some of whom were skeptical from the beginning, were just praising this, so. The, the, the large buildings were cut down to, except for the, the senior care on the, on the one side stayed the same, but all of the individual multifamily, they're all single-story now, and there's no problems with the residences behind the berm, and residents will be 55 and over, so it's going to be very nice. We had the, the CSM, which you voted on tonight, that combined two separate owners into one for that yard site. That's why there had to be a new CSM. We also had a site plan approval for the Seven Brew Coffee Shop, which will be in the Hobby Lobby parking lot.
Great. Any questions for Alderman Dolnick? Yes, sir.
The, the new TIF, is that a brownfield? Is there any remediation that needs to take place? All right, thank you.
Well, I don't think so, unless there's something by the old quick flash, Mark, but... Technically, it is a remediation district. That doesn't necessarily mean it's an all-environmental remediation. The vast majority of it has no known contamination. There are at least one site within it, the former Jacobus, which was a petroleum storage facility, which does have known contamination on it, but, and it is an eligible TID project identified within it to, to help out if necessary and warranted, but it's not required of the city at this time.
Thank you. Any other questions? Then before we go into closed session, we are going to be adjourning from closed session, so open up. Is any news for the good order? Alderman Dolnick?
I just had a question. How many weeks ago did the public notice for our budget meeting get published in the newspaper? Wasn't that within days of, of our last council meeting? Couple of weeks?
Two weeks.
Two weeks ago. Two weeks ago. Okay?
Well, I just wanted to thank staff, thank administration again, for the budget. You know, if anybody knows the history of our annual budget, this could have been a pretty big pill to swallow, but the fact that our council approved this unanimously, I think this really shows our commitment, not only to our taxpayers, but our commitment to our staff, and especially the fire department in this year's budget as well, so I just want to thank everybody for their cooperation for this effort. Yes, sir?
Two, two things. I'd like to remind everybody that we have the general election tomorrow. Get out and vote. It's too late to vote absentee, so trot down to your precinct and vote. Second thing, I'd like, or, actually, I've got three things. Second thing is I'd like to thank all the election workers and city staff that worked to provide a safe and secure election process. And finally, I'd like to thank all veterans for their service on the upcoming Veterans' Day, holiday Friday, November 11th.
Thanks, Mark. Anything else for the good order?
Just one more thing to add. He stole a couple, a couple of mine that I did want to say, but I also wanted to, I wanted to add that I think we should be proud of our, our finance department and our city administrator for the job they've done with the, with the budget and, once again, being awarded the distinguished budget presentation award.
You've got it.
That's it.
Thank you. Anything else? Then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn into closed session pursuant to state statute section 19.85, paragraph 1E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require closed sessions for the development at 105 South Forest Avenue and 235 East Water Street.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motion second. And Lisbon, if we could please have a roll call vote?
Alderman Butchlick?
Aye.
Alderman Allen?
Aye.
Alderman Burquist?
Aye.
Alderman Kayler?
Aye.
Alderman Dolnick?
Aye.
Alderman Aaronz?
Aye.
Alderman Model?
Aye.
And Alderman Zingheim.
Aye.
We are in closed.